Good seeing you, sir. No, he won't have to stay, stand any more time. Give him a microphone.
He's got a, he can kneel.
He can go to his desk, I mean, watch online.
He probably could. So, there won't be a lot going on, we'll probably get the council updates pretty quick. So. Yep. Yeah, that's right. I mean, I'll be honest, there's not a lot. There's only four and two of those are, uh... Yeah, three of them are, are related to each other. And then the waiver of distance limitation.
I know, it's some smaller ones to keep on me.
I try to stay away from that, but, you know. Alright, at 7:00 PM in Gardner, Kansas, I'm gonna call the Gardner City Council meeting to order. If you please rise with me for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope all of you are doing your social distancing and doing your part to slow the spread of coronavirus. Um, I do have a proclamation this evening because things do move along on the calendar and it is April. It is, uh, autism awareness and acceptance month, so I wanted to read this into the record. I know there are some members of the community here, uh, to also, uh, be recognized, I'd love to, uh, have them, they can stay in the back, if they can stand in the back of the room if they'd like, but I'd like to be able to, uh, recognize the group. Hi Jennifer, good seeing you. Thank you. Uh, whereas autism spectrum disorder, or ASD, is a complex neurological and developmental disorder, scientifically appeared during early childhood and affected an individual's ability to communicate, process sensory input, and interact with others, and whereas autism is the third most common developmental disability affecting 3.5 million individuals nationwide, and whereas as more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 54 children annually and nationally, and whereas accurate early diagnosis and resulting appropriate education intervention are vital to the future growth and development of the individual, and whereas parents, self advocates, and providers have dedicated years of service in their ongoing efforts to advocate for their rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with autism, and whereas these groups remain committed to awareness and to educating families, professionals, and the general public to better understand this lifelong disability, and whereas Autism Society now celebrating 55 years of service to the autism community is spearheading an awareness effort in order to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about creating a better world for autism. Now therefore be resolved that I, City Shute Mayor, the city of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April of 2020 as Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month in Gardner, Kansas, and urge all employees and residents to participate in our municipality's National Autism Awareness Month activities in order, virtually, for most of them, in order to become better educated about autism and create a better community for individuals with autism. And thank you so much for coming out and supporting, um, your families, and, uh, I, uh, am very happy to, uh, to give this to our local autism coordinator, and, uh, I will hand this over to the county here. And, uh, you know, I'm trying to, this is called contactless delivery. Okay, so there you go, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Trent, turn around. And, right there.
Also what?
Right there, no, no, no.
Right there, 6B.
There you go. There you go. Very nice. Thank you for supporting the individual's condition. Everybody's in there, wait, where's Rich?
It's okay. Mayor blocked me.
I'm sorry, nope. Move back to the other. Okay, good.
Alright, thank you.
That was it, great, thank you.
Alright. That's the best part of my job, I love doing those. Alright, uh, we are scratching, uh, presentation item number two. Uh, there's some additional due diligence that's going to be done on the part of our utility staff, and then they'll be bringing that to our meeting on the 20th of the month. So, uh, stay tuned for our wastewater treatment presentation for the next meeting. Uh, presentation item number three, 2020 to 2024 capital improvement plan. Uh, Finance Director Matt Wolfe is here to, uh, tell us of all the exciting things we've got going on the next few years. How you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First I'd like to go over the schedule for the CIP this year. Um, today, or tonight, we're starting with the CIP presentation through the governing body. Then on May 26th, I'll present the CIP to the Planning Commission. Um, by state statute, they have to review it and make sure it's components to the comprehensive plan. And then on August 3rd, we adopt the 2021 budget, and also our conditional, um, 2022 budget. Tonight's presentation starts with a CIP overview, then I'll go into detail about the 2020 and 2024 CIP, and then, uh, I also want to go over some of the unfunded projects we have. When we developed the CIP, we first identified the needs, each director looks through the capital improvement element, master plans, utility assessments, and also just community needs they have identified, and they develop, um, project scopes to address those needs. Then they determine costs. This is not just the initial project funding, but also we look to see what kind of impact would have on future operating budgets. And we always have more project requests than we actually have funding to be able to do projects, so we ask that each director, um, prioritizes their capital requests. And then finance works with directors to try and develop financing strategies, and we look at, um, different financing types, like for some projects we use cash and that will have an immediate impact to the budget. Other projects will issue debt for, which you might not see initial, um, impact to the budget, but you will in the out years when you have annual debt service. It is also very important that we tie, um, the term of the debt to the useful life of the asset. Capital budget stands for what we actually have funding authority to do. Last year we approved the 2020 budget, we created a capital budget for 2020. This year it will be creating 2021 capital budget. We refer to the Capital Improvement Program, or CDIP. That's a five-year plan. It's basically to look on the short-term horizon, see what capital improvements we need and what kind of funding sources we need to carry out those projects. The Capital Improvement Element, or also known as the CIE, is a 20-year look. It's to see in the, what's on the horizon for the community, what type of major products do we have coming up, so we don't get cut off guard. This slide shows the next five years of CIP. We try to keep it even throughout most years, you'll see most years are around 11 to 13 million dollars. The CIP by department, about 50% of our projects are utilities projects with dedicated revenue sources. Public Works makes up about 46%. But one reason they're so high is that's total project cost in this graph. There's a lot of grants that they leverage to carry out those projects. Once again, it's important that the CIP conforms to the comprehensive plan. And we do this by looking at different goals that are stated in our comprehensive plan, and then aligning our projects underneath these different goals. Under high quality and dependable public services and facilities, we have an airport terminal and FBO hangar. Staff has recognized that there's several deficiencies with that building, ultimately recommend its replacement. We believe that there might be financing available from KDOT to help fund that project. The new main, line mains building, over the last four years, the line main is division has grown in staff, and will eventually need a more permanent solution for, um, where those staff, um, equipment and supplies will go. Wastewater Treatment Plant Advanced Nutrient Removal. That project we are only going to do if we're actually mandated to, and it's a pretty expensive one at 5.8 million dollars. Once again, that project will only occur if there's a mandate for us to carry that out.
Do we, Matt, do we think that's a high probability?
We don't know at this point, Gons would probably be better to answer that question than I am.
The present, um, uh, permit we have for Kill Creek, uh, we're within the, uh, limits for nutrients, but there is a, uh, a lot of conversation and talk that they want to lower the limits, and that would require additional process or chemicals to be within compliance. So we'll find out, I think the permit is up, uh, by the end of next year, so we'll find out then if we need to do the project or not.
Thank you, thank you, Gons.
And then every five-year CIP has, um, several utility projects that generally categorized that are maintenance facilities or system redundancy. I'm not going to go every, through every one of those projects tonight, but it was included in your packet. Under Maintain Safe and Efficient Transportation Network, we have the Moonlight Madison Signals for 2020. The need to signalize Moonlight Madison will be driven by traffic warrants. Left turns have been rated as poor level of service. Traffic counts will be obtained annually to see if the signal warrants are met. We have a reconstruction from 175th to Madison. It's currently a two-lane section with no sidewalks, open ditches, that has flooding and safety issues. This project will address those concerns. Moonlight Road Rehab, I-35 to Buffalo Trail. Improvements are needed for the, this roadway section before interchange can be built at Moonlight. The Main Street Rehab Project from Sycamore to Moonlight, scheduled for 2021. This project will leverage approximately $2 million in KDOT funding. Center Street Rehab, Main Street to 176th Street. Project involves a partial road reconstruction that is needed to help protect one of the city's main north-south arteries. Failure to reconstruct sections of the road will create a need for a complete reconstruction. Center Street Sidewalk Improvements will address an existing sidewalk gap on the west side of Center Street, where pedestrians are forced to walk in the grass. The project will provide a continuous sidewalk, will include widening the existing sidewalk on Center Street Bridge. The bridge of improvement was identified in the Main Street Quarter Study. The proposed land acquisition is needed to protect the airport's runway protection zone. 183rd Rehab from Center to West, and 166, 167th Street from Center to Moonlight, are both scheduled for 2024. Under Balanced Park System, we have the 2020 Trail Resurfacing Project. This project will make improvements to South Center Street bicycle and pedestrian pathway. We are planning to use funds from the Infrastructure Special Sales Tax Fund for this project. Under Support Growth, we have the design, or we have the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange Project, designed for this, um, project, it is well underway. The construction is expected to start this year. The Cedar Nile to Claire Road overhead power line, a prior trace three-phase underground power line, will help extend electric utility services to the new Grotto Project. The Gardner Road Bridge will cost approximately $10 million. The project will leverage approximately $6 million in KDOT funding. The design for the new water transmission line, and the new intake structure for Hillsdale Lake will expand capacity and help support community growth. On this slide, we had several project requests from departments. Um, you can see the project name and then also the year that was, they requested that it take place. We do not currently have funding available for these projects, given the local match portion, and we believe there'll be grant funding available for a lot of these projects, but we still can't afford the local match for these. Going a little bit more detail into CIP funding. Basically, the Special Highway Fund cannot support any additional road projects, even if it's just a local match portion. And with some of the projects we're issuing debt for, like the Gardner Road Bridge, or the interchange project, the funding won't likely be available in the near future either. We have been building up some street excise tax revenues in the Street Improvement Fund. We have approximately $1.5 million there. Public Works Department is currently evaluating the best way to leverage these funds to bring in additional grant money to fund one or two of the unfunded street projects. If you remember Senior Municipal Advisor Bruce Kimmel, he was, he gave a presentation on fiscal capacity last month, and he basically showed that we had about $10 million in debt capacity bond and interest. In his model, he based this on a issuing geo-debt with a 20-year term. If we issue debt on a 10 or 15-year term, as we often do for street projects, we'll have less debt capacity than $10 million. I wanted to remind council that the debt capacity is there, but I'd urge caution when considering the utilization of it. We're facing some uncertain economic conditions right now. It would be prudent to keep the debt capacity in case of an emergency, or to have it basically in your back pocket if a major economic development project comes along. Ultimately, that's a policy decision. At this time, I'd invite City Council to write any comments or direction you may have regarding the CIP.
Great, um, could you go back one slide, uh, sure, thank you. Actually, one more, sorry about that. Um, the Gardner Road Bridge over I-35, the 2022 project, uh, that's not the east span, that's the act, that's the second span, correct? Because the first span should be matched with state funding already. So this is the, this is the second span that we need to build to get to the diverging diamond, correct?
I'd have to look through the project scope, give me a minute.
Sorry about that, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Michael, if you're on, feel free to chime in.
Uh, no problem. Ah, right here. Projects, second phase of improvements, the I-35 and Gardner Road Interchange. KDOT hired HDR to perform the preliminary design of the proposed diverging diamond interchange and follow design of the new bridge over I-35. So this is the, the full replacement for the diverging diamond looks like.
Correct.
So, Ryan, I know that we don't have matching funds from KDOT for that, and that's, is that the reason why that 9 million number is what it is?
Uh, well, we have actually $6 million in funding from KDOT planned for that project.
Correct, but we don't have the full funding.
No.
We're still waiting on that second span.
Generally for these projects, like, we're gonna have to have some kind of local match from the city itself, so I think we're probably not gonna get much more than $6 million for that project.
Yeah, okay.
One thing we're considering is-
Federal infrastructure funds from this new, from phase four of this coronavirus thing.
One thing we are looking at is to see how we can, if we can combine cars and KDOT money on the same project. We typically haven't done that, we're looking to see if we can in the future.
There may be some opportunities here to lever some mark money as well. So, uh, I'm already trying to pull those levers at the mark level, but we're working with those guys. Right now, they've got other fish to fry, but once this gets passed, we'll be able to ratchet that up, I think.
And any efforts to help, uh, get additional grant funding would be greatly appreciated. The purpose of the unfunded project slide was to show you, these are important projects, they're identified by staff. They need to be done at some point, and basically every year we'll continue to look for more funding.
Well, if we're looking at this span to be completed in 2022, then we probably need to start tightening the screws very soon to try to get that funding secured, so that we don't have to spend $9 million in 2022, so. Yes?
Matt, on, um, 167th Street, Center to Moonlight, that's 310,000-ish. It's reconstruction, so I assume that's leaving it as is, a two-lane road, not going to a three-lane or four-lane at this time, that we're not projected to. It's out at the 2024 mark, so maybe we'll get time to look at traffic and development, but I assume that's all that that's including right now.
You're talking about 167, Center to Moonlight?
Center to Moonlight, yeah.
PW 2404.
Yeah, this is just base repairs and resurfacing.
Okay, yeah. We know that that's definitely, in fact, I think it's on the next page for unfunded projects right now.
No, it wasn't.
It was not?
But I could see where that one may change and be more expensive.
Oh, it would be, well, it's a million dollars a mile.
It would be good to have another, another thoroughfare that's significant.
It's about a million dollars a mile, so you're talking, and that's lane mile, by the way, so if you're talking about five lanes, or four lanes, you're talking four or five million dollars, so. Trent, could you go to the next slide, I believe it is? So, the first bullet, Matt, Reconstruction Celebration Park, uh, parking lot, excuse me. We didn't encumber any funds from a maintenance perspective for that parking lot?
Not to my knowledge, we have not for that parking lot. We really haven't uncovered funds for any of our parking lots. We've talked about implementing similar to like a sidewalk program, something to just basically look at other aspects of pavement management as well, and that would include parking lots.
Yeah, I think the, the plan was originally to add those, uh, city parking lots, because they are basically city property, into the CIP, uh, CIP, into the pavement management program. I believe that is being investigated, we just haven't completed it yet.
So do we have any sort of, I mean, the, that parking lot has heavy-
Oh, it's horrible.
Heavy, uh, use, and therefore it's got heavy potholes. Are we able to take advantage of kind of this downtime with no use out there and do some patching?
I talked to Jason about that this week, and he's gonna work with Michael to see if we can get some of the bigger areas like Byfield 6 and get a patch.
Something else to consider is like, when we looked at this, like, you kind of redoing the entire parking lot, that's like a million dollar project. Michael's looking to see if we can take out some of the bad sections, the really bad ones, and fixing that at a lower cost.
Okay. Problem is substrate's washed out in many areas of that parking lot, it was never really put in correctly to begin with, but we know that, we know that there's a lot of, there's a sinkholes. Basically, I wouldn't even call them potholes, they're more like sinkholes now, so. We can, if we can fill or, you know, get some, get some rock in there and then put some, good patching in there, that might help to extend the life a couple of years.
Thank you, man.
Yeah. You have anything? Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
Alright, next on the agenda is a public hearing to, uh, for, for the purpose of, uh, receiving comments to a request for a waiver of distance limitation that we will be considering later on in this agenda. Um, we have a motion to, uh, open a public hearing.
So moved.
Take it. Motion Mountain Second Baldwin, that we open a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments for the request to waiver of dislimitation to allow for the sale and consumption of cereal malt beverages for consumption within 200 feet of a school church or library during the Gardner Spring Derby at the Johnson County Fairgrounds. All those in favor, decay by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The hearing is now open. If you have comments, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. We have a five-minute time limit on comments. Uh, we have the clock on the left-hand side here. Uh, only rules are no profanity, no personal attacks. With that being said, the hearing floor is open.
Anything online come through?
Nothing online came through. I would have read them into the record at that time. Thanks for asking.
Somebody's gotta keep an eye on them.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion Mountain Second Baldwin, we close the public hearing, all those in favor, decay by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? The hearing is now closed. We want to cut public comments, members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or, or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. For those who are in the room, there is a podium, there is a clock, five-minute time limit, no profanity, no personal attacks. Before I open that podium, I do have one, uh, comment that was received via email that I will read into the record. Uh, it's from Michael Creller, 18413 Sycamore Court, Gardner, Kansas. City Commissioners and Mayor Shute, thank you for taking the huge step of helping all the citizens of Gardner with your recent action to cancel the payment of the month's electric bill for all of us. I commend your willingness to recognize the difficult circumstances that many citizens are in with the layoffs and business decline due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Again, thank you for taking the immediate needs of our citizens to heart and providing us some relief. I would also like to thank each of you in person, but we are staying at home until the pandemic eases. Thank you, Michael, appreciate your comment. With that being said, the floor is now open to public comments in person. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any member of the council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing that I'll undertake a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion Mountain Second Gregorsick, that we approve the consent agenda, all those in favor, decay by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. There's nothing on the planning and zoning consent agenda, no committee recommendations, and all businesses non-existent, so we move on to new business. We'll move on fast here. New business item number one, consider request for a waiver of distance limitation and general retailer special event temporary permit to allow for the sale and consumption of cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a school church or library during the Gardner Spring Derby at the Johnson County Fairgrounds. City Clerk Sharon Rose.
How you doing? Hi, how are you? This is a housekeeping item in relation to the public hearing that you just held. Um, this is a request to offer beer sales during a, the Gardner Spring Derby, should it be allowed to continue and happen on May 9th?
Sure, it's May 9th, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you. Any public comments on new visit, oh, no public comments, because we already have a public hearing, so just to scratch that comment. Any questions for, uh, say clerk from the council, yes?
I wonder, is this something, uh, this is new, I believe, for the fairgrounds to, to do this. I mean, is this something that might come up more than once, and do we maybe want to look at just doing it like for a year at a time, or just a general waiver?
I'm not sure if we're able to do that, uh, city attorney, are we allowed to do that, or do we have to handle this on a special event pro, uh, uh, purpose?
No, I, I think you can, I think the distance, I mean, you know, like we did it for tumbleweed, you know, we granted it on more than just that, more than just a week basis. I mean, you could grant it for longer, um, so I think that's within your discretion.
Would that, would that grant be then toward, for the, for the fair association and not for the event manager?
Yeah, I'd, I'd probably want to revisit the code and, and figure out how, how best to handle that. I mean, usually for events like this, we do it in favor of, um, the event sponsor or the caterer.
Organizer.
Um, someone who, uh, because I think we do require, correct me if I'm wrong, Sharon, we require proof of insurance, um, you know.
They do a background check.
Right. I think whatever event sponsor was gonna be, we would want to make sure all those things were in place.
Yeah, well, they, I mean, they'd still have to go through the permitting process, I guess, I'm just wondering if each time it, if this is gonna be like at the fairgrounds, that they're going to be going that direction, and we can even wait and see if we get more, but maybe it's just easier like to give the authority to you at that point to, as long as they check off all the boxes. Uh, we, we can, like I said, we, we can wait and see if we get more than this one, but.
I think in, individual waiver circumstances have to come before the governing body to approve on an individual basis, am I not correct on that?
Well, I mean, you approve the site, right?
Correct.
And as part of the approval, we internally require the background check and, and the insurance requirements. So I, whatever we did, I, I, we would want to make sure that those pieces were in place for whoever the event sponsor was, understanding that the fairground would rent the space to likely a third party.
Correct.
You'd need some process in place to make sure that that third party was, um, having the background checked on and all the other things.
It's, it's a liability issue more than anything else, correct? I mean, if you, if, if the, if the fairgrounds had a blanket, uh, waiver of distance limitation, then they would be taking responsibility for the consumption of those products, am I not mistaken in that?
Yeah, I mean, the city doesn't have liability from that, uh, perspective under the, under the Torque Claims Act. The fairgrounds could, um, and, and so, uh, but really, I think from our perspective, when we do the back, background checks, we just want to make sure if we're granting a distance limitation, a distance limitation is in there for a reason.
Yeah.
A certain distance from schools, it's statutory. So, certain distance from schools and churches, um, you know, us doing, taking those additional measures just, just to ensure that due to their proximity to those facilities, that those protections are in place.
I think we'll have to see how it goes going forward, but I definitely like the idea of, you know, if it's something that we're going to approve over and over and over, not blanket forever, but for a year or something like that, that makes sense.
I think, I think-
You could, you-
I'll go ahead.
You could probably craft an approval in favor of the fairgrounds contingent upon anyone that, um, that they brought, where they wouldn't have to come back before the governing body every time, that it could be administrative, where they would just provide, um, the proof of insurance and the background checking. If the city clerk approved that, then, um, then that would be good enough. And in fact, um, you know, in Merriam, um, we, I actually wanted, even though state statute says the governing body's supposed to approve cereal malt beverage, um, what, what I did there, because they didn't, they want, didn't want every one of these coming before them, is having a, an administrative process, and then only in the event of a denial would it come before the governing body.
Okay, great, um, I appreciate that. I, I've had just those same discussions, I'm sure you have too, uh, talk with members of the fair association and- One of their biggest concerns is that they don't have an opportunity, they cannot serve alcohol on their premises without. Coming to the governing body every single time for a waiver of distance limitation, so. If that's, I'm assuming that's what you're kind of getting at.
Yeah, actually, they haven't approached me directly, but I was just, yeah, I mean, I know, like working with the pest on the trails, you know, each, each year we have to make sure we get all the stuff in and.
Sure.
Get before the governing body and all those things and.
Yep.
So I know if, if it's something that we are gonna approve frequently, you know, given the authority to you.
Okay. And I do believe the fair association will be coming forward later this summer to request a CMB license for the fair. They have not done so yet, but they've indicated that they would be interested in that.
And if you all are interested, I can get the ordinance that I put together from Merriam with the.
That'd be great.
Administrative approval to Sharon. She can circulate it for y'all to look at.
That'd be great.
See if you're interested.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I was gonna say, I think one of the more telling things will be that how it shakes out with the. Excuse me, Sheriff's Department and all the other things that go along with that, whether they continue to do it or not. This is their first year, so. I know that's always been the kind of concern in the past is. There's already people who are pretty, feeling pretty good by the time they get there.
Sure, so, yeah, I've seen those people.
Horrors crashing into each other.
Right, yeah.
The blood flowing.
They like demolition derby.
Right.
Please don't want it outside the arena. Alright, any other questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion on new business item number one.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Melton, second Baldwin, that we approve a request to the waiver of distance limitation and general retail special event temporary permit. To allow for the sale and consumption of cereal malt beverages within 200 feet of a school church or library during the Gardner Spring Derby at the Johnson County Fairgrounds. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? New business item number one passes. New business item number two, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the public sale of approximately twenty-nine million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars of principal amount of general obligation bonds. Matt Wolf, hello. Hopefully you've got some good news.
The city is scheduled to sell approximately twenty-nine point one five million dollars in general obligation, uh, general obligation bonds on May fourth, twenty twenty at eleven AM. The attached bond sale documents prepared by municipal advisor Kimmel include the estimated cost of issuance and debt service schedules for the water treatment plan expansion and the smart meters project. Please note that the term for the bond's repayment period for the water treatment plan is twenty years and the term for the smart meters is ten years. Their proposed rule, uh, resolution authorizes all preparations to facilitate the sale of the bonds. And I believe bond counsel Ellsworth and also advisor Kimball are on the phone. And are available for any questions you might have.
Absolutely. Good evening, bond counsel Ellsworth and financial advisor Kimmel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great. With that being said, I will open the floor for any public comments on new business item number two. I don't think we'll have anybody. Alright, questions for Matt or Bruce or Tyler?
One quick question. What, uh, what do you guys' guess on what kind of rates we're looking at with everything going on?
What's my own counsel relevant?
I, I said, what do you think the rate, or, uh, what's your guess on the rates that we're gonna see when this thing goes through?
Yeah, this is Bruce Simons, your financial advisor. Nice to be with you remotely here. Counselor Melton, Mayor, Council, this has really been a remarkable two to three weeks in the bond market. We've seen. Periods of tremendous volatility, all the bias, periods where the, the rates will either go up or go down with velocity that we have gained. Uh, in quite some time, but I would say that in general, rates are holding pretty stable. And, uh, the rates that we have in our packet are actually pretty close to where the market has been. Actually. The cushion that we have, we have about twenty-five basis points in there is about right, so. I would say that if you sold your bonds today, I was just checking some sales that did happen. Uh, interest rates would be right around twenty-five to thirty-five basis points better than what we have. So hopefully that will still, uh, hold true a month from now when we, when we look to sell the bonds, um, if not, be a little bit better. And in case the market does decide to go haywire again, uh, leading up to the mini bond sale, we do have some alternative ways of accessing capital. For the city that we've discussed with both Mr. Wolf and Mr. Ellsworth. So I feel like you have strong options. Our, our plan A is certainly to act as the public market like you have in the past and with great success. But we do have a plan B as well.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Alright, with no one else having any other comments, I will entertain a motion on resolution two zero five one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Gregorsik, second Melton, that we adopt resolution number two zero five one, a resolution authorizing the public sale. Of approximately twenty-nine million, one hundred fifty thousand dollars of principal amount of general obligation bonds of the city of Gardner, Kansas. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Roberts?
I got, I got my picture.
Yes. Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregorsik?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Yes, I'm a little jealous. I don't have a picture.
There are pictures. Oh my goodness. Resolution two zero five one passes. Stop the sidebar conversations on the right side of me. New business item number three, consider adopting an ordinance approving the description and survey of lands necessary for constructing, reconstructing, maintaining public utility improvements designated in resolution number one nine nine zero. Told his director, Gons Garcia. Good evening.
Let me get it. I have it here. Give me a second here.
If you need a little more time, Gons, we can move on to.
No, I, I finally found it.
Okay.
Well, it has to do with the, um, go and give it, give it a little history. The project started in twenty seventeen is to put a backfeed to connect in circuit forty-one to forty-two, which is the. Furfield subdivision. The, we run into a problem that the owner of the Furfield subdivision wouldn't give us easement. So we went ahead and requested a, first a consent from the city council to go ahead and. Initiate the condemnation process. Then a resolution was passed. And this is the final, which is a ordinance to go ahead and move forward with the condemnation.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Gons. Alright, uh, public comment on new business item number three. Seeing none, any questions for Gons on this item?
Gons, what's transpired since July of eighteen? I mean, we had the resolution, so what's been going on basically since then?
There was a, besides, uh, doing the eminent domain on the Furfield subdivision. There's a property north or south which belongs to Horizon Trails. So that was one avenue we were looking for. We, after the landlord for the past year with no. They are, he has not responded. He's willing to give us easement. And due to the growth we're having, that backfeed is needed now. So that was the reason to. Go ahead and pass and request the, uh, the ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can we, when or if we get the possession of this property, how long would it take to get that backfeed put in?
It will take about maybe two to three months to do it. If not sooner.
And we're ready to go with equipment and everything else?
Yeah, we have all the cables, all the equipment, materials ready to go.
Great, great, thank you.
Since twenty seventeen.
Oh, I, I can imagine. Um, it's been a long time and, uh. Don't like the fact we're having to do this, but we have to get that back, backfeed in line, so.
This one's a little baffling though, because we're not actually taking any land.
No, we're not. This is aerial.
This is just to allow digging to be done and the work to go in the ground and, or aerial.
Yeah.
It, it's really kind of baffling why this is such a, a fight, to be honest.
I think it's because that individual probably had those, uh, plans for that particular piece of property along the west side.
Well, there's nothing they can do with it. It bouts up right against the Edgerton property.
Right.
I mean, there's nothing that can be done there. That was explored two years ago.
Hey, we, yeah, that, that was the option, was going south or go to Edgerton and Edgerton would not give us the easements, so.
Shocking.
We're going back to Furfield.
Okay, alright. Alright, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number two six five five.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Melton, second Baldwin, that we adopt ordinance number two six five five and ordinance approving the description. And survey of lands necessary for constructing, reconstructing, maintaining of public utility improvements designated in resolution number one nine nine zero. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Gregorsik?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, this is gonna be great. Ordinance number two six five five passes. Uh, next item is, uh.
Thanks, Gons.
Yes, thank you very much, Gons. Uh, new business item number four, consider resolution establishing a policy related to property tax abatements for new and existing businesses. Matt Wolf.
The city's existing economic development incentive policy adopted April twenty fifteen and amended February twenty sixteen. References property tax abatements but does not contain specific uniform policies and procedures required under. KSA seventy-nine dash twenty, two hundred fifty-one A for constitutional tax abatements. The proposed tax abatement policy supplements the existing economic development incentive policy by adopting official policies and procedures for granting such exemptions. Proposed tax abatement policy outlines conditions and criteria for granting the exemption. The required preparation of analysis of the cost benefits for each exemption and the procedure for the monitor, monitoring of the compliance of a business receiving an exemption. The staff's recommendation that you adopt the proposed tax abatement policy.
Great, thanks, Matt. Public comment on new business item number four. Seeing none, any, I have a, I have a quick question before I hand over the rest of the council. And that has to do with, could you make, could you provide as succinctly as possible a. Description of what is the difference between a constitutional abatement and a abatement that's tied to like an industrial revenue bond or something like that?
Tyler, feel free to jump in after I give my explanation and add to it.
Sure.
Basically, there's two different types of abatements that we can grant. We've typically used IRBs. And then there's also constitutional abatement when they, the constitutional abatement has a, it's a little bit more strict on who can use it. And if there's a business that want, uh, can qualify for that, they're gonna have a preference for that because then they don't have to pay our origination fee and application fee. Or they probably still pay application fee even without origination fee, so it depends on what type of business it is, determines kind of if they're gonna go IRBs or constitutional abatement.
Is that because of the issuance of the bonds that carries, there's a carrying cost to that? Is that possible? Okay.
And they're, I mean, if you can get an abatements without having to pay that one percent origination fee on the principal amount of IRBs, that'd be preferable to most companies.
Yeah, that's, it's just surprising that not very many people use constitutional abatements in Kansas. Am I correct in that assessment, uh, Mr. Ellsworth?
That's correct, yeah. And as Matt said, um, there, there are sort of two primary differences. One is that IRBs are in general, um, a bit broader. They can really be used for any kind of commercial enterprise. Whereas a constitutional abatement has to fit within certain narrower categories of business. The other difference is that it, in an IRB that you're using to put an abatement in place, you automatically get the sales tax exemption. With a constitutional abatement, the sales tax exemption does automatically apply, so you have to get that if you're doing another. Abatement incentive program, for example, you could get that sales tax exemption, but an IRB is usually just a bit flexible, uh, a bit more, uh, nimble and easier to give than constitutional.
So wider range of construction materials or other types of, uh, expenses that are part of that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much. That also explains why not very many constitutional abatements are being used in Kansas, but.
To my knowledge, the city of Gardner's never done a constitutional abatement.
Which is why it's not, it wasn't in our incentive package until today, as a matter of fact.
I had to get people to agree to sign the agreements. As you may remember, there was a, uh, Mr. William Osborne, he was here. So we're, we went ahead and take, took another look at the alignment. So we were able to move the. The, um, transmission line from Mr. Osborne proper to the north. We just went and final approved from Water Seven to do that because the new line will be between Water Seven and the right away of Miami County. But it looks like you, they'll go ahead and approve that, uh, finally signed.
Great.
So we went ahead and, uh, negotiated with the eight property owners. Some of them has, they have already signed the agreement. One of them is pending. And the settlement is pending on two of the landowners, although they verbally have agreed to it. So I'm requesting, uh. To approve, to accept an authorized payment for the, uh. One, two, three, four, for the five landowners, total of fifty thousand, fifty dollars. And on the Victorian level, 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 it includes a pond consent.
Okay.
During the design, KDHE approved the new location of this, uh, retention pond. And they gave a condition that the landowners south of the plant, they need to agree to it. Because the pond will be within a hundred feet from their property line. So it took a lot of negotiation that it finally decided to sign the, uh, consent. But there was a dollar amount associated with that. So it's included in the thirty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gons. Public comment on new business item number five. Seeing none, any questions for Gons on this negotiation? Looks like we've got two more that we're still waiting on.
Hopefully be here next meeting.
So we'll have an additional action to.
Yes, sir.
Disperse, and we will not have any eminent domain actions.
No, sir. We avoided that, uh, that approach.
Good work. I appreciate that. Alright, uh. With no one else having any questions, I will accept a motion for new business item number five.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Melton, second, Winters, that we accept an authorized payment for permanent and temporary construction easements for the new raw water main as part of the Hilldale Expansion Project. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, new business item number five passes.
Oh, mayor.
Yes.
Also it says the pond consent. I don't think you said anything about the pond consent.
There was no, uh, it just said authorizing payment for permanent temporary construction easements. For the new raw water main, but we can add and consents. Yes, so.
So if you, we can add the pond consent, so.
Yes, I will, I will add that, uh, the pond consent agreement, uh, for that motion.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have to have a revote.
We're trying to move and second that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do wish to, okay, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mr. Dank. He's keeping me in line here. Alright, uh, can I have a motion in a second to add pond consent?
So moved.
Second. Alright, motion, uh, Melton, second, Winters, that we add pond consent agreement for the suggested motion for accepting and authorizing payment of permanent temporary construction easements. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Good catch, Gons.
The amended motion passes. Thank you very much. Alright, council updates. We're now done with regular business. Does staff have anything for council? I'm gonna start with, uh. I believe we have most everybody on this, uh, on this call. Do we have anybody who's not on the call, uh, city minister?
Can I give you your, uh, Jason's city watch on YouTube? I'm trying to get you to call in.
Okay, well then, I will hold on the, on Jason's report then until. Answer that here. Um, Chief Jay Belcher?
Definitely for us, mayor.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief Belcher.
Sure.
Maintain your distance.
Yes, yes. He's practicing social distancing and giving us the update from the, uh, from the administrative conference room. Let's see, um. Let's see, um, Gons Garcia, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, um, Economic Development Director Larry Powell.
He's way in the back.
He's way, way in the back. He's in the other room. Is he calling in from there? He was on the other room. Okay, well, we will wait on Economic Development Director Powell's report. I see a foot there, but I don't think that's Larry, is it?
Larry's right there.
Larry Powell.
You're up.
Updates.
Updates, council updates. Anything, do you have anything for us?
Didn't realize that. I've been trying to find Charles to figure out why we're not on the air.
It's, it's back up.
It's back up.
It's back up, it's back up.
Yeah.
Larry, could you do me papers?
Let's try it though, Larry.
Thank you. Here's Larry.
Good evening, uh, Larry Powell, Director of Business and Economic Development. Uh, so we've had, uh, a slowdown, of course, as to be expected in permits for the last couple of weeks. However, there's still quite a bit of activity. We are taking applications through the electronic permitting process that we have set up. So the developers pretty much are used to that program. So we're not having any problems in the area of the uh, general business public and getting the applications into us, but the general public themselves, the people that are doing their own fence work, their own uh, decks and those kinds of things are having a little bit of a problem in accessing us. And I would just say to them that if they would just call our regular, uh, office line, we have people fully staffed on, in the, in the office to answer any questions that they may have on how to get the permits to them. We can deliver them electronically through email. We can take payment over the phone, uh, through the credit card system. So the process itself still functions. It's just taking a little bit longer to, uh, get that to them simply from the point of view of the review process because many of them still bring us paper documents and we have to figure out some way to get those documents into us and review them and then get them an answer back out to their questions. So just want the general public to understand that the city is still doing business in that area. Uh, they can contact us Monday through Friday, eight to five on the regular phone lines. Or they can email our office and if they just go on our website, they can pick up our emails, uh, in any one of those departments. And the rest of the, uh, offices or departments of the city are functioning much in the same way. So for example, Public Works, if you have a pothole problem or a sign problem or something, some question you have in regards to the Public Works Department, uh, or the Utilities Department, they're available through the same methods. Price Chopper is still moving forward. Um, there's been a little bit of a slowdown only in the aspect of the social distancing and, and the, uh, keeping their crews spread apart, so to speak, as they do their work. Uh, we're still doing inspections across the city for all of our housing departments. And if you look at the reports, we had a hundred and fifty-two permit, uh, inspections last week, which is pretty much a normal week. We still have people pulling housing permits to start new houses. Um, again, we've had a little bit of a slowdown in some of our inner office, uh, problems with trying to get material back and forth to each other because of people working at home don't quite have the same functionality as we do here in the office. But we're working on those technical problems and we should be able to get them smooth that here pretty quick. So. If you have any questions or anything, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
Yeah, Larry, I, um, I don't believe it's a question, but, uh, back to, uh, folks that are building decks or home improvement things during this, um, period. Uh, could we get something on social media that would kind of give them, uh, maybe some direction, frequently ask questions? Um, point out that, you know, scanning documents would be, you know, beneficial, you know, just to try to streamline it. Um, 'cause I know a lot of folks are home and.
Right.
Many of us are doing home projects ourselves. I know I'm busier than a one-legged man in a kickback contest, so. Um, I think that'd be, it behooves us to help those folks out to help them get their projects done.
Certainly. Uh, we have been working on that a little bit, uh, with Zanika and, uh, we're in the process of trying to do that very thing, sir, but I appreciate you bringing it up. Uh, and one, I think, unique aspect, um, you mentioned that a lot of people are doing home improvement projects. We found it very strange, but of the businesses that we've contacted and talked to about shortages over the last couple of weeks, one of the most unusual I thought of was that all the paint in all the stores is being bought up. So evidently, everybody's painting all the insides of their houses all over the, all over the county because evidently, there's just hardly any paint to be found on the regular paint shelves, which is kind of like, I guess, the same thing with toilet papers. If you're gonna be home, you might as well paint your, paint your house up, I guess.
Like paper mache with toilet paper.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick, Larry, on, uh, as far as, uh, pulling a permit, so if someone is going to put like, replace deck boards and not replace the whole deck, do they need to pull a permit for that? Or somebody asked me about that and, and I'm like, I, you know, I don't know.
Uh, if, if you're doing general maintenance on your deck and by general maintenance, we're saying that you're, let's say you're, you're replacing uh, less than half of your decks just throughout the piece of the process, no, there's no permit required for that.
Skinning the whole thing.
If you're gonna reskin the whole thing, it might be best to give us a quick call just so that we could take a, a quick look at it because um, a lot of decks are marginal right now as far as when you go to replace them. Uh, they may, they may actually be needing like a handrail or something like that that weren't there originally and they were grandfathered. But if you're replacing that much of the deck, we might wanna have a conversation just to make sure it's up to code.
Okay. I'll let them know. Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, oh, Jason, Jason Bruce, you're on, you're on the phone.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you well, very well. Um, you have an update for us from Parks and Rec?
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Uh, staff continue to work remotely. Um, one of our biggest projects right now is launching software programs that we're training on. Seems like every other day we got new stuff to do for implementation. Still on schedule for June. Uh, we're also looking at contingency planning for programs and events down the road. Uh, just kind of seeing what other agencies are doing, uh, the county as well. Uh, and putting those plans into place when we can start programming again. And then parks guys are continuing to take care of our parks. Uh, we are still asking people to please stay off of our playgrounds. Um, till we get further direction to move forward with both. So that's kind of where Parks and Rec is at as of today.
Great. Uh, I did have a question. Uh, there was a question that was posed to me via email regarding Gardner Golf Course. And, uh, I had actually, uh, passed that along to, uh, you and, uh, the city administrator. Do you happen to have an, I, uh, can you address that, uh, for the public? Because there are some questions about, uh, from people that are asking why the golf course is still running.
Yeah, so we've been in communication with county and, and other agencies. And several of the metro, there's golf courses are, are putting in place lots of social distancing measures uh, to keep courses available for play. Gardner Golf Course in particular is, uh, doing things like raised cup, uh, single players per cart. If they choose to use a cart, they're sanitizing those before and after individuals are using them. Uh, they're not serving food, beverage inside. So they're putting in measures very similar to other, um, other courses around the metro.
Yeah, I know some of the private courses are, are, are shutting down. Um, but I know that there are several public courses that are still open. Uh, but I just wanted to see, I, I wanted to have you address that. So thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay, um.
Well, I'll just wait until my, I'm just waiting until my time to go.
Okay, okay. Uh, Finance Director Matt Wolfe. Can you give us a quick, uh, kind of, uh, update or indication as to where we're seeing revenues right now? Because obviously times are a little strange right now.
Keep in mind, a lot of our revenues that are, we are expecting a decrease, like transit guest tax and sales tax come in about two months after the month. So we haven't seen those numbers yet, but we've been hearing ranges from anywhere between ten to twenty-five percent decreases. And we've been working with city administrator to basically take budget steps on how to prepare for that.
Yeah, but we, we want, our, our goal during this period is going to be to try to keep within that twenty to twenty-five percent fund balance, correct?
Correct. Uh, we'd like to keep it around twenty-five percent and.
Yeah.
The other thing to take in consideration is transit guest tax is probably gonna hit the hardest.
Yep.
Could be up to like sixty percent decrease in revenues.
Which means our support of people like Southwest Johnson County DC and the chamber might be reevaluated.
Correct.
Will be reevaluated. And, and the county and, and some of the larger cities in particular are taking pretty drastic measures to, uh, to account for that. We're not, obviously not as exposed to the sales tax decrease as other cities are. Uh, and our drivers, Walmart, Price Chopper are probably doing pretty well. It's the county contribution that, that we get that is gonna take a hit. And that includes the, um, courthouse tax for the, the Justice Center. Yeah. So we, we've taken, um, steps to, um, freeze hiring, freeze discretionary and non-essential spending. Um, I've had my, all my directors go through an exercise to cut ten percent of their budget for the rest of the year in preparation to get out ahead of this if it continues. Uh, we would need it options that were afforded to us through the, the First Family and CARES Act. Uh, so we're staying aggressive and, and proactive and, and preparing for this, so. Great. That's good to hear and, uh, glad to know that we're being proactive. Uh, we don't wanna be in a situation like we were in twenty-eleven where we had to, uh, take some pretty drastic haircuts across the organization. So. Uh, thank you. I appreciate your work on that.
The other update I had for you was we had a kickoff meeting with the Price Chopper developer for the CID bond issue. And that the developer asked for the opportunity to introduce its finance team at the April twentieth council meeting. The team as proposed includes representatives for Paul Sinelli, serving as the developer's counsel, Stifel, Nicholas and Company, the placement agent for the bonds, and PGAV, the firm that will provide the revenue study to size the bond issue.
Okay, great. Thanks, Matt. Am I forgetting? Oh, city clerk. Have any for us?
Nothing for me.
Uh, city attorney Dank.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first off, I'm glad to be back from quarantine. Um, but I wanted to check in. It's been a while since I've been in the chambers. Um, there's been a lot that's happened since I was last in here. Um, you know, I've been trying to keep everybody abreast of all of the emergency orders. I've been sending around memos. For a while there was changing on almost a daily basis.
Hourly.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, it's, it seems to have mellowed quite a bit since then. Um, Jim mentioned the FF-CRA uh, and the CARES Act. Um, you know, been trying to stay on top of those issues, but I wanted to give you all an opportunity since this is my first time back since a lot of this has hit. If any of you have any questions about any of the emergency orders or any of the, um, the federal legislation, if, if you have them now or if you think of them later, um, feel free to reach out to me and I can, I can try to um, enlighten you. I've been fielding a lot of questions, particularly about the CARES Act, um, for local governments relative to revenue projections, op, uh, options in terms of personnel, um, things like that. So, um, if any of you have any questions, just let me know.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, city administrator. Um, operationally, things are going well. We're about three weeks into our remote work. Um, the availability of staff and, and their working with their employees to make sure everybody stays productive has gone exceptionally well. The directors have been great in that regard. Um, the work of the city seems to be going as normal as possible. Um, so commend all of my directors for that. And one of the things you'll hear people talking about, and it's not just here, is the essential, non-essential business thing. Um, we are, our hands are, are pretty tied with regard to identifying and determining who is an essential business. Um, when the state's order we almost had is the county group almost had a plan in place to notify enforce at the county level. And then the governor put out a statewide directive that superseded the county order and then everything changed. So the state has set up a line where businesses can either apply or ask questions to determine whether they're essential. So we have not, Jay had a meeting today about how enforcement would be done if it comes to that because up to this point, we've had a lot of, of voluntary closures, but there's two or three businesses and in other places, many, many more that are just thumbing their nose in and saying, I'm not doing it. And with no enforcement mechanism, with no support from the prosecutor to enforce as the act is, or as the order is currently written, our hands are tied. So we're doing the best we can to make sure everybody complies with the spirit of the order, um, doing notifications, trying to talk to people. But there's some places that just will not cooperate. So we're kind of waiting to determine as a county and as a state how that's gonna, gonna play out with regard to charging people and going to court and doing all those things. It, it's hard to uh, I'm not gonna point out any, but it's, it's hard to justify, um, some of the businesses that have been deemed essential. It kind of goes against the spirit of, you know, this is truly essential. And when they did that, it kind of undermined the order. And that's what people are struggling with. I mean, they'll look at that business and say, why is this business open? If they're essential, surely I'm essential. And it gets down to, you know, what type of business they are. So it's a struggle for everybody in the county and hopefully in the next couple of days we'll have that resolved. Great. Um, morale good amongst the staff? Yeah, morale is good. It's like a ghost town around here. It's gonna be hard getting everybody back to work. I was thinking, hopefully they don't get too used to being. You know, 'cause things are, I mean, things, communication between me and the directors, directors and staff. Um, I mean, it's been excellent. We're using Microsoft Teams for internal communication, using, um, Zoom for other communication. Haven't been hacked yet, so that's kind of disappointing, but otherwise it's been, it's been good. We have any Zoom bombing or anything like that going on? So Ryan will tell you, I mean, it does, it changes in just the interpretation of the language for the CARES Act of First Family is it's confusing, it's convoluted.
The Department of Labor did a complete one-eighty, uh, in five days on whether the FF-CRA extended FMLA lead beyond regular FMLA lead. Originally, they said it didn't and then a complete one-eighty, um, to, to say it, it did not.
That's a huge interpretation difference there. Wow. Well, thank you very much for all your help and, and your, your work on, on, uh, keeping the operations of the city moving. I know it's been kind of Herculean, uh, with all the different departments, all the different staff that we're having to coordinate. Uh, I appreciate your leadership and also the leadership of the directors in getting that done, so. Yeah, we have a great staff. Yep, we have an awesome staff. Uh, I keep saying that. We have the pride of the entire metro in this, in working for this city. So, uh, I appreciate you and the whole staff. Thank you. Um, does, uh, council have anything for staff? I'm gonna start with, uh, Tori, Tori Roberts.
Okay, one last time.
Yes.
I don't think, sit on the camera. Um, I wanna thank whoever, um, started the Facebook post today that talked about the sidewalk blocking of people parking because I'd had some complaints and I was gonna bring it up, but it's out there now, so that's good. With the increase, it seems like more people are out on the sidewalks and it's just a good reminder for people. And, um, I also wanted to thank, uh, for getting the word out and clarifying about how people can process their payment with the electric update or the electric holiday that we were giving, 'cause I know there were a lot of questions and I think we've done a great job trying to get the word out as best we can through Facebook and everything. So that's it.
Great, thanks, thanks, Tori. Um, Councilwoman Gorosik.
Well, thank you, mayor. Um, playing off of what Tori said about the, uh, electricity, we still have the Dropbox out here for payments?
Yes.
And then is there anybody in city hall to receive payments?
Uh, city.
Economic Development is usually staffed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that was the question that I got.
They can't come in the door, though.
They can't, we check the Dropbox.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so they can only pay through the Dropbox or online?
I was gonna say, yeah, they can't come.
Okay. That was a question that I had.
Yeah, they, they can also.
Yeah, thank you, over the phone, yes, okay.
Or Price Chopper.
Dropbox?
Yeah, there's a Dropbox, yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one was for Chief Belcher. Uh, Officer Kate Davison dropped by my house to tell me my garage door was open at about ten, ten-thirty. So I wanted to say thank you for that. And I think that's a great, uh.
And that was Officer Davison.
Did I say that right, Davison?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I thought that was a great community outreach. Uh, I know there's a lot, a lot of people doing different things. Hence the sidewalk blockage and walking and seeing people in your neighborhood you've never seen before. So, um, I appreciated her, uh, I appreciated the officer's, uh, stop. So that's all I had, mayor.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Chief Jay Belcher. Making a cameo appearance. Yes, thank you very much, Randy. Um, Mark Baldwin.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you?
Oh.
Um, council vice president Melton.
So is.
So is, uh, Jason still out there?
Yep.
So, um, what, what have you heard so far about the pool? Is, is that because of chlorine and all that? Or is that a COVID-safe area? Do we know?
I have not heard. I do not know. Um, we had a, uh, I was part of a Zoom call last Friday. We spoke to sixty agencies throughout the state. And that was kind of the elephant in the room was our pool, the pool across the state. Um, people are kind of just waiting to see what's going to happen with the statewide order. Will it get extended? Uh, will they implement more social distancing? So we're just kind of waiting to see what's going to come down from the state level.
I would say we buy inflatables right now that are six feet around and, uh, we, we want to be the first ones with those because they'll sell out fast. Uh, we can just issue them as people as they walk in, so. Well, that, that came up during one of the, the county managers' group and they're going to identify a drop dead date where, you know, it's not going to be worth it because it's several hundred thousand dollars just for our pool to open. Oh, yeah. And if we get past, if we get closer to July and it hasn't been opened, then. Yeah, no, that's what I figured. I mean, just the water alone is, so, um, thank you for that, Jason. Uh, and then on a, on a real happy note, RG Fiber came by today when I was working in my backyard and started fixing all their mess. It's been out in the back right away forever.
They've been busy out there.
I just still like to make sure before we let them have their bond money back, that we double check and make sure it's all done everywhere. But I was pleasantly surprised, so.
Yep, me too, me too. Because it's their, they were over by, uh, Evergreen Park today as well. So they're not necessarily practicing social distancing, but they were definitely working on those, uh, on those digits, so.
That's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Council President Winters.
Yeah, I just had a question. Uh, someone had asked me and I wasn't sure. The citywide cleanup, are we still proceeding with that? Um, I don't know who asked about that.
You should. That's like getting rid of all your old COVID.
I mean, yeah, because, well, I assume there's a lot of people that are going to be cleaning and cleaning out.
We're in the middle of discussion on that. Um, obviously, we talked about ten percent cut to the general fund budgets for each department. And we haven't had a chance, all the directors haven't had a chance to meet with Jim about what is, should we include into what we're planning to cut. But I remember that was part of the discussion. And also one of the reasons was the cost of that has significantly gone over what we've had in the past.
Yeah, we've gotten, we had twice as much, uh, garbage picked up last time as we expected. Is that correct? It was like a, it was.
I don't know off the top of my head. You'd have to ask Public Works Director.
Do you remember what our, our cost was last year roughly?
I remember it exceeded budget. I don't remember the exact, exact dollar amount. But it was anticipated to be even more expensive this year.
Okay.
Okay, but that's a great point. We'll look at that.
I know there's a lot of people that are, that are counting on that, actually.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be.
Exactly.
Yeah.
One part of that discussion also is, um, as these programs get more and more expensive, um, other cities have been, uh, being, I guess, more selective on what they're doing. Like, they might limit them out of items or the type of items. And those are some considerations for council also as we move forward.
Maybe like a five-dollar permit fee to do it or something, something to help off, so, you know.
Like a late that doesn't do a one-time pickup, but you can call and have them schedule, I think it's even next day, and you pay twenty-five bucks and whatever will fit in a front-end loader's bucket, they will take. And they'll do it as many times as you want throughout the year.
Then we could do like a baguette program to where they have, um, eight-by-four vinyl bag or heavy nylon bag or whatever fits in that, something along those lines.
Lawnmowers won't fit.
If it fits, it shifts.
Yeah. Well, Deaf and Ball or Waste Management has a program similar to that now.
You've got Home Depot and buy their bag.
Home Depot, or big, four-foot by eight-foot by two or three-foot deep.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Anything else?
Nope.
Great. Um, just a couple of statements I want to make. I can't say enough about how, about the job that, uh, our city staff is doing. I have heard virtually no complaints about service quality or the availability of staff during this time. Um, even though we have been pretty much closed down, locked up tight for a couple of weeks, almost three weeks now. Um, we have been, uh, we have been ahead of the curve on a lot of these items. And I just wanted to, you know, again, uh, single out, uh, our, our wonderful staff, our directors and our city administrator for keeping a steady hand on the toe while all this is going on. For the public, I wanted to mention that, um, it's kind of a really tough time right now. Um, we know that, uh, nationally they're expecting a peak in the coronavirus deaths in the next two weeks. Um, they're saying April fifteenth, which is usually a bad, a dead, bad day for other things, is going to be a bad day for the country. I would very strongly recommend that over the next two weeks that we continue to follow the guidelines from the CDC's, um, uh, initiative to slow the spread. And, you know, engage in your social distancing, uh, try to wear a face covering while you're in the, uh, in the public places. If you know that you might be having to go into places like grocery stores where you might be within that six-foot distance. Wash your hands frequently. Wash your hands as many times as you can. Um, use hand sanitizer, sixty percent alcohol or higher. Do not touch your face if you can help it. Um, if you do, use a, you know, use a tissue or something like that. Um, that way we can try to keep this from spreading any further. The last thing I request is that, uh, we all pray for our first responders. Uh, pray for our healthcare professionals that are putting their lives on the line every day to, uh, fight this disease. Um, if you don't believe in prayer, that, you know, set, put out some happy or positive, um, thoughts in the direction of our first responders and those that are on the front lines of this thing. Uh, we will get through this. Kansas has been blessed to a great extent, um, compared to other areas of the country. Um, but we do need to, uh, keep, keep vigilant. And as we keep vigilant, then we will get past this sooner rather than later. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Melton, second, Baldwin, that we adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned.